Okay, great. So now we're on to our next order of business on the agenda is the Maryland National Park and Planning Commission preliminary plan of subdivision number four dash one nine zero five zero. We plan in advisory board docket number twenty tech oh four. This proposed applica- application is a request for approval to subdivide property into building lots and obtain adequate public facilities approval. And this evening, the petitioner is Gibraltar Management and represented by Mr. Edward Gibbs of Gibbs and Holler. So if we are ready to proceed on this case, let me go ahead and take care of the preliminary administrative. And for this case, the hearing tonight will involve a presentation by city staff, followed by a presentation by the applicant. Board members will have an opportunity to ask questions of staff and their applica- and their and the applicant following their presentation. The board will also have an opportunity to hear comments submitted by the public for the public hearing and any questions received during the hearing. Board members will be polled for their comments, if any, prior to a motion. All those wishing to speak. Joe, do you have them recorded? Because I understand there's twenty people who are signed up to speak. And I don't want to have everybody shouting out all at once. So can we just take those names that are signed up? And do one swearing in?
Um, Mr. Chairman, not half where people this is an advisory item. So what we will do is we will have anyone who wishes to speak. Go under the Q and A function in in Zoom and just simply type the words wish to speak. And at the appropriate time, we will unmute your microphone so that you can make a statement during the public hearing portion of this item. So I would encourage everyone to use the Q and A function, type the words wish to speak. We are not answering questions through the Q and A function tonight. So there will be a presentation by a staff, the presentation by the developer, and then the public hearing. And we will go down the list for everyone who has indicated that they wish to speak, we'll call them by name and unmute them at that time. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, I think you're probably ready to hear from the staff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Minor. And with that, Mr. Stevens, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Rogers, members of the planning board. For the record, Frank Stevens from the city planning staff here tonight to review with you. Mill Branch Crossing preliminary subdivision plan number four dash one nine oh five oh. The subject property can which you'll see on the next slide consists of seventy point one oh acres is zoned CSC Commercial Shopping Center. Is located in the north eastern quadrant of the US three oh one northbound Mill Branch Road intersection. And the proposal is to create twenty one parcels for the development of retail, commercial, residential and hotel space. On page two of our report, we discussed the history and the site background of this property. There was a preliminary subdivision plan approved in May of two thousand and nine for this site. For retail, commercial, office, hotel space, and the city supported that application. The property was annexed into the city in April of two thousand and twelve. And then last year, there was a zoning text amendment approved, which the city also supported CB forty five two thousand and nineteen to allow gas stations with food or beverage stores, multifamily and townhouse dwellings in the CSC zone. Also on pages two and then on page three, we provide a summary of the virtual stakeholders meeting that was held on this case on November seventeenth. On page three of the report begins the discussion of the proposal and the analysis. And we identify the subdivision regulations through subtitle twenty four, which call out the findings that are required to approve a preliminary plan of subdivision. On page four, there are discussion regarding water and sewer facilities. Parcel A, which is the bulk of the property, it's about sixty eight acres is in water sewer category three. Parcel thirty two, located in the northwestern area of the site with frontage long three oh one is in water set sewer category five. However, the process to advance that property into category four is pending approval in the current cycle. On page four, we discuss the the police facilities and service will be provided to this property by the city police department since it is within the corporate limbs of the city. On page five, there's a discussion regarding fire and rescue facilities. The first responding fire station to this site will be the Northview Drive Station located a little more than a mile away. Also on page five, there's a discussion regarding school facilities. The property is is within school cluster four, which has a capacity of between eighty two and ninety five percent at the elementary, middle and high school levels. At the time of building permit, there will be a county surcharge that will have to be paid for each residential unit. On page six begins a discussion regarding traffic impacts. There were seven intersections studied in the traffic impact statement that was provided. Would like to make call out one revision to our report, and that is on page seven revision to item number three B, where there's a discussion regarding Route three oh one Mill Branch Road and Excalibur Road. That intersection with the mitigation that's proposed will will meet the county regulations of providing a hundred and six mitigation. So that's there's not an issue with that with that improvement. On pages seven and eight, we discuss bicycle and pedestrian improvements. We discuss seven improvements recommended for this project. On page nine, there's this discussion regarding stormwater management concept plan, which continues to be reviewed and is undergoing revisions. Also on page nine, there's we discuss the woodland conservation plan. There are a little over eight and a half acres that will be conserved through preservation, a forest and a forestation, reforestation. And there'll be another eight point six acres retained that for which the applicant is not being given credit in accordance with the county regulations. Also on page ten, we discuss two environmental factors, wetlands impacts and historic site. Further down on page ten, there's a discussion regarding the conformance with the master plan. This project is a proposed mixed use project, which conforms with the area master plan and the text amendment that I mentioned earlier. On page eleven is the staff recommendation for approval with conditions cited on pages eleven and twelve. We would offer a modification to condition two C, and that would be to delete the second sentence, which gets back to that item I discussed earlier regarding the mitigation for three oh one Mill Branch Road and Excalibur Road. That concludes the staff presentation. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Stevens, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. There any questions of staff before we turn to the applicant? Okay, with there being no questions from to to the to staff, then Mr. Gibbs, it's a pleasure to see you this evening. It's been a while since we've seen you.
It has been a while, Chairman Rogers, but certainly a pleasure to be here this evening as it is every opportunity to appear before the Bowie Advisory Plan. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Advisory Planning Board. Edward Gibbs, an attorney with offices in Largo, and I am here this evening representing the owners of the property. And of course, the applicant is is identified as Gibraltar Management, but the actual owners are Green Branch Limited Liability Company and GBR Mill Branch Limited Liability Company. Mr. William F. Chesley, the managing member and really sole member of Green Branch LLC is with us this evening. He has signed in and is certainly prepared to answer any questions, which anyone may have. GBR Mill Branch LLC, Mr. Ronald Friedman is really the representative for that LLC. And he is in New York and and is not present this evening, but I'm representing both of those limited liability companies. In addition, on the call this evening, Mr. Russell Baker from Mr. Chesley's office, I believe, is with us. And Kim Morgan, our civil engineer, is with us this evening, as is Jackie Chandler, our transportation engineer. In case there are questions. Just a couple of things I'd like to expound upon from the staff report, which in large measure we we agree with. And we appreciate, by the way, the review and the communication that we've had with with both Mr. Minor and Mr. Stevens. It's been very helpful, as it always is. Again, we have two parcels of property here. One is a platted parcel parcel A, and it's about sixty eight and a third acres. And the other is parcel thirty two, which is one point eight acres and some change. And it is a a deed parcel. It is not subject to a record plat of subdivision. All of the property, the entire seventy plus acres is own CSC Commercial Shopping Center. As as Frank had mentioned in his presentation, the larger parcel parcel A was the subject of a preliminary subdivision plan, which was approved in the early summer of two thousand and nine. And at that time, an entirely commercial development was proposed in excess of five hundred thousand square feet with a one hundred and fifty room hotel. That preliminary plan again was approved and the property proceeded to be recorded as a single parcel now known as parcel A. So that is a record plat on record in 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 the land records of Prince George's County. No development ever occurred pursuant to that record plat. Now, annexation again into the city occurred in April of two thousand and twelve. There is, of course, an annexation agreement that went along with that annexation. And again, the property continued to lie fallow. The county council adopted a new zoning ordinance, as you're aware, in October of two thousand and eighteen. And while the new ordinance has been adopted, it's a valid piece of legislation. It is not effective yet and will not be until the county is comprehensively rezoned and all properties are assigned new zoning classifications. This particular property, both parcel A and parcel thirty two, are proposed to go into a zoning category known as CGO, Commercial General Office. And that zoning classification permits and encourages mixed use development. So it permits, in general, most every type of retail, commercial use that would have been permitted in the CSC zone. But it also permits multifamily residential as a matter of right at forty eight units an acre and residential townhomes as a matter of right at up to twenty units an acre. So with the recognition that this property is going to be placed in the CGO zone when the comprehensive rezoning of the county is concluded. My client worked with the county council and in particular Councilman Turner. And of course, also worked with the city and drafted a zoning text amendment, which would effectively allow the uses in the CGO zone to move forward now so that we didn't have to wait until the comprehensive rezoning was complete. That led to the adoption of the zoning text amendment, which permits the uses that we have before us. And that occurred in two thousand and nineteen. So so it's CB forty five of two thousand and nineteen, and that permits us to move forward with residential uses in the CSC zone and permits all the uses that are being proposed. In order to implement the new use scheme, however, we had to file a new preliminary subdivision plan, and that's why we're here. The entirety of the earlier development had been through and had been found to satisfy all relevant statutory criteria in the subdivision ordinance, including equity of public facilities. And we had a traffic study that proposed a number of road improvements. So we were found to have satisfied that at one time, and we fully expect that same finding will apply this time around. We filed a new or a revised traffic impact analysis. And the results of that analysis are that we satisfy the subdivision ordinance requirement. So this preliminary subdivision plan really cuts back on the commercial. It's about a little bit under eighty thousand, seventy, almost seventy eight thousand square feet of commercial pad sites. And we still have the one hundred and fifty room hotel site. So eleven commercial pads, the hotel pad, three hundred and forty seven residential multifamily units are proposed in the center of the site. And then abutting along the sort of the 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 eastern and southeastern portion of the site would be one hundred and ninety one residential townhomes, fee simple ownership of the townhomes. And access would be gained from two points of access off of a private roadway running easterly, running, so I guess, yes, easterly from Mill Branch Road with two points of access into the property, one a long a long stem road running through the commercial and the multifamily and a second point of access individually for the residential townhomes. And that's a little further down to the to the southeast. So with that being said, I think that pretty much describes the development proposal that we have. We've we reviewed the staff report and we really concur in general with just about everything. We have a couple of questions about some of the conditions that we would like to bring to your attention. First is condition number one, which was very understandable for your staff to recommend because parcel thirty two, as Mr. Stevens cited, is not in category four for water and sewer. And our under our statutes, you have to be in category four to have an approved preliminary plan. So we have filed a category change seeking to move that property from category five into category four. We anticipate that approval will occur as part of the December one cycle of amendments before we get to the planning board. So we do not want to take parcel thirty two out of the preliminary subdivision plan. So that would address condition one. Relative to condition two, we agree with all three of the subparts. Those improvements are identified in our transportation impact study. The only comment that I would make is that in condition two C, there is a statement that the mitigation improvements must achieve a minimum of one hundred and fifty percent of our trips that we generate. And in actuality, it's only one hundred percent. So in other words, the mitigation has to has to absorb, has to account for and lower the critical lane volume for the trips for one hundred percent of the trips which we are generating, not one hundred and fifty percent of the trips. So we would ask that that number be be corrected. Relative to the bicycle and pedestrian improvements, there are a series of lettered paragraphs beneath that A through F. We agree with with condition three A. Condition three B, we have a concern with because we we don't think that it is a safe situation to propose a pedestrian crossing of US three oh one at this location. And when the prior preliminary subdivision plan was approved for this property, a similar condition had been discussed and the state highway administration made a determination that they did not want a crosswalk across US three oh one. So we would respectfully ask that you consider not including that condition. Condition three C with regard to bicycle parking is fine. Conditions three D and E. Once again, if the state highway administration tells us they want us to do that, then we're certainly going to do it. We do want to talk to them because we're we're not quite certain that it's safe to have bike lanes along US three oh one in this location with the high speed levels. So we'd like to have some opportunity to talk with the state highway administration. Condition three F is fine, the five foot sidewalks. We certainly agree with that. Relative to condition four, we we certainly agree that we will work with the city to replant to the greatest extent that we can. We don't know that we can simply agree to everything in this condition because our woodland conservation requirements are going to be determined by the environmental planning division and ultimately the decision of the planning board. And so we do, you know, we don't have their recommendation on this yet. And so we do need to sort of hold back to talk to them and hopefully the three entities, the city, my client and our our team and the environmental planning section could all get together on a call to try to work this out. But we do want to work with the city to 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 achieve your goals in this regard, to the extent that that we reasonably can. So with those comments having been made, I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Chesley and our team, our civil engineer and our transportation engineer are available for questions. And thank you very much.
Okay, um, thanks very much, Mr. Gibbs. And questions at this point from our board?
I have a question. So, Mr. Gibbs, when you all can or updated or conducted the traffic study, did you take into account the other developments that are currently going on in the area? Specifically, the townhouses that are going to be built a little further down three oh one? And then the possibility of some other houses that would be built at the Bowie Town Center?
Well, when we do a traffic study and when we update a traffic study, we have to negotiate a scoping agreement with the transportation division of the Park and Planning Commission, and this case was no exception to that. You you are required to include traffic from approved but unbuilt developments that are within the parameters of your study area. And so in this case, there were five that were required to be included. And one of those was Amber Ridge. I'm I'm thinking that maybe those are the townhomes that you were referring to because the Amber Ridge project is approved but unbuilt. And I think they have upwards, I don't know, one hundred and sixty five, one hundred and ninety five towns, something like that. So the the traffic that those townhouses and the rest of the Amber Ridge development, there's a little bit of retail as well, are all included. We had to we had to do our study as if those cars were already on the road. So there were five developments. And I don't think anything at Bowie New Town Center was included in those five, but it was like Pin Oak Village, Amber Ridge, Greater Mount Nebo. We included all the traffic, even though, you know, even though technically legally it's not required. We assumed the existence of traffic to be generated from the regional Green Branch Park as background in our studies. Matter of fact, those those trips are twenty two percent of the trips in our study. And it's not even legally required for us to do that. But but anyhow, so so we did include those five. And they're all listed in our transportation impact study. But I don't I don't think there's anything from Bowie New Town Center in the way of townhomes because that's probably not approved yet.
Uh, any other questions? Okay, Ms. Trash, are you going to say something?
So I I guess I wasn't clear on the stormwater management plan. Was that approved? I guess this question can go to either Mr. Gibbs or Mr. Stevens. Was that final stormwater management plan approved? Is it anywhere in the vicinity of the residential properties that are being proposed? And just some information on that. I wasn't quite clear.
Well, the I'll answer first, and of course, Kim Morgan is the expert on this, and so she's certainly here to to respond as well. But when we originally subdivided the property and created parcel A for the in excess of five hundred thousand square feet, we we got after the preliminary plan, we got an approved stormwater concept plan from Prince George's County because we were not in the city at that time. Then we annexed into the city and and we got an approved stormwater concept plan from your city engineers. The we have amended the stormwater concept plan to account for the new development that we're proposing, meaning the residential component and the deletion of some of the commercial. And so that that amended stormwater concept plan has been filed. We have received comments from the city engineers. And we are just waiting until we sort out with Park and Planning exactly how the residential footprint is going to look for the townhouses in particular. And we will then be responding to your city engineers' comments. The subdivision ordinance only requires that a stormwater management concept plan be filed prior to a preliminary plan being approved. And obviously, there's a reason for that, of course, because everything is so conceptual. So but we're going to work hard to get that completed, and I'm I'm happy to have. Kim, do you have anything else you would like to add to that? I think you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, you can hear me? No, you you summed it up perfectly. We we will revise the stormwater concept plan based on the county engineers' comments and based on our revisions to the preliminary layout once the once we have that confirmed.
Thank you. I don't I don't. Board member Trash, I don't know if that answers your question or not, but I hope it does.
But yes, uh, yes, I I thought I heard in there that there was still some more approval or work to be done.
Absolutely.
And I just will say from a personal perspective, I am glad to hear that you don't want to put a crosswalk across three oh one. It's a busy, very busy, dangerous highway. I don't think pedestrians should be encouraged to cross that highway.
Yes, ma'am, we agree.
Okay, do we have? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Trash. Have any other comments from the board? Okay, I have one question, Mr. Stevens, for the items that the developer or Mr. Gibbs has indicated that they have a little, you know, a little bit of heartburn with in terms of our recommendations, how does that, what what can you weigh in with on that? What was the reasoning for wanting to put a crosswalk across three oh one and? Speak to that a little bit.
Well, the the reasoning for that is there there there's now going to be a destination for the residents on the west side of three oh one to go to. There is going to be a trail along the along Mill Branch Road. And there's also a recommendation for bicycle signage. This is in the county master plan of transportation for Mill Branch Road to accommodate bikes. So the thinking was to facilitate both pedestrian and both pedestrian and bicycle access from the east side to the west side and vice versa. Because with, under the old plan, there were no residences proposed in, in Mill Branch Crossing. Now with townhouses and apartments, there, there would, there may be those who live, living there to cross over onto the west side, to do shopping at Walmart, to go to the Bowie Town Center, Glen Allen Park and, and destinations on the west side. So it just facilitate, you know, that kind of back and forth movement. There is a, a pedestrian crosswalk a little further north on 301 at the ballpark 301 intersection. So this would not be the first one in this corridor. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't be the only one, but there, there, there's another one that exists.
Right, so, you know, as we talk about development and particularly urban development or suburban development, we got a lot about livable, walkable communities and, you know, the walkability scores and things along those lines. How do we connect, you know, stay connected? Because obviously 301 is a divide between two communities and you're, don't want to create, create situations of isolation. So was there any thought to maybe a pedestrian bridge or any other way to make sure that our communities stay connected?
There was no thought to pedestrian bridge. I would say that I, I think the way the, the condition is written that it's, it would be subject to the approval of state highway. So, you know, maybe things have changed in the last 10 or 11 years where they might be supportive of a crosswalk than, or more supportive than they were, you know, under the previous plan. But again, it's all subject to state highway.
I just don't want to see a situation where, you know, for example, I mean, you know, there's a great opportunity for commerce to cross 301, but we wanted to, you know, happen in a safe environment. The pad sites or the commercial sites that will be developed in the new Mill Branch subdivision, we want the people from the west side to be able to safely, you know, do some shopping and take your, walk, use their walking trails and all of that. But I, I definitely agree with Ms. Tras, having a crosswalk going across 301, that's a pretty dangerous situation. Wondering if the developers thought of any ways to connect the east with the west?
I, I don't, you know, I think we're, we certainly are going to be talking with the state highway administration relative to what their wishes are. We, we had, we had not considered a bridge because the cost of that is simply prohibitive. And so, so that is not something that we had on our radar to, to propose. And again, we are concerned about, about safety. So I, I guess the only thing I can say is that whatever the state highway administration is going to require, they're going to require. And we certainly are going to work with the city in, in communicating with state highway administration.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions?
Just want to interject. The pedestrian bridge that goes across 197 at Town Center, that was my condition that I imposed way back when. Because it was a safety concern. To put a crosswalk on 301 is absolutely ludicrous from a safety perspective. The one difference also with the 197 pedestrian was that the topography was a lot more conducive than what, what it would be on 301. You look at the elevations and, and just the, the intersection itself, you're going to probably be talking some serious, serious money. And to do so also at this time with 301 becoming a parking lot most of the time. I just want to interject that I'm not saying whether I'm opposed or, or for, but I think as Ms. Tras and as Mr. Chair alluded to, it's a suicide mission if you put a crosswalk across there.
Okay, any other comments? Questions? At this point in time, I think we'll open up the hearing, open up the, our meeting for the public hearing and members of the unity that are signed up to speak. We will begin hearing from them.
Yes, sir. Chairman, again, this is Joe Minor, the planning director, and I'd like to encourage all of our attendees, if you're interested in speaking during the public hearing, to please use the Q and A function in Zoom at the bottom of the screen and just simply state there that you wish to speak. We currently have four people signed up to speak. And the first person that we're going to recognize is Billy Williams Henderson. And at this point, I will unmute Billy Williams Henderson. And you may speak.
Hi. My name is Billy Williams Henderson and I am the vice president. Hello. My name is Billy Williams Henderson and I am the vice president of the Mill Branch HOA. I have several concerns, but I, I just want to, questions in reference to the apartments and the townhouses that you're bringing into the community. Wouldn't that create more urban sprawl? Because I, I went through and I looked, I said, we had Harmony Place, which was put up. And evidently they didn't do so well, so they were bought out by Bowen and they became Bowen Apartments. Then we have Alvesta Apartments on Elder Oaks Boulevard, Heather Ridge Apartments on English Oaks Boulevard, and Governor's Green Apartments. And looking at the rating, these were all scored below 3.5% out of five stars. And, and so how are we going to maintain the property values of those that live within Mill Branch that paid this $500,000 plus for the rural residential areas? How are we going to ensure that by developing these apartments and townhouses that it does not lower the property value within the Mill Branch corridor?
Okay, thank you for that comment.
Thank you. The next speaker that we have signed up is David Smith. And at this time, I'm going to unmute David Smith and allow Mr. Smith to speak.
Okay, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So thanks for the, for the opportunity. I think that was a great question from my, my resident, my, my neighbor, Billy. I also echoed that, I guess that, that question and that, that sentiment. It's a shame we can only, I guess, ask one question as a resident of Mill Branch Estates. I do have a number of questions, a number of, of concerns, as if, as any, you know, homeowner would as it relates to, you know, impact on property values, potentially declining, increased traffic potential for flooding, which I think it was, you know, it was a good question by, by one of the board members regarding the, the stormwater management to then, you know, the impact on, on crime. But I guess specifically, I'll narrow it to, to one question. And, you know, again, I guess I'm concerned about the significant and inevitable increase in traffic on Mill Branch Road, given the proposed, you know, almost 600 units from what I've, when I heard, 340 multifamily units, 190-plus townhomes. Not to mention the numerous commercial and retail employees, vendors and patrons. I would think that an entry exit point on Route 301 should not just be a consideration, but should be mandatory. That is putting a tremendous amount of traffic, you know, on Mill Branch that will, you know, impact that flow and specifically impact the, the residents of, of Mill Branch, Mill Branch Estates. So I, I guess my comment is, you know, preferably, preferably to think about maybe adding a, a main access point from Route 301, not Mill Branch Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Our next speaker is Mr. Gary Henderson. I'll recognize Mr. Henderson. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much, really appreciate that. When we look at the upcoming Mill Branch Crossing development, as well as the preliminary plans of hotel, retail space, as well as the new community of over 550 new residents, along with Mill Branch Estates, as well as all the longstanding residents that have been here off Mill Branch Road for many years. We're looking at well over 75-plus residents here off Mill Branch Road. The thing here, I know it's a question that you can probably take to heart, is what are your plans for adding additional parks? Outdoor recreation, for example soccer fields, picnic pavilions for families throughout the community at large. Recognize that there's currently nothing on this side of 301 that exists. And with all the new, new coming residents that are, that are being planned for here with the preliminary plans, we're going to need something in place for them. And the key thing is can you do something to make an addendum or put an addendum out or to your preliminary plans? Add some to those preliminary plans to show that you're doing something for the community as a whole. I recognize that when it comes to real retail space and all those different things there, I mean, it's all about making money. I recognize that too as well, but we also need to make sure there's something here for the community. Bowie is known for its parks as well as recreational areas. So we need to make sure that on this side of 301, that we have what we need here on this side as well. So that throughout Bowie, families can truly enjoy life the way it's meant to be enjoyed when, when it comes to recreation facilities, parks, picnic pavilions, whatever it is to keep our families happy.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. We have one last speaker who has signed up and that's Miranda Jackson Parkin. At this time, I will allow Miranda Jackson Parkin to speak. Go ahead.
She muted maybe?
She has comments in the chat box.
Did I unmute?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just kind of wanting to know about the resolve, if there's going to be around that pedestrian because there is a lot of, there's a lot of people who use Mill Branch to do bike riding as they go down to Davidsonville and also a lot of joggers. So is that going to be a consideration of maybe having a, a pedestrian bridge?
Okay, thank you for your question. And that's all of the speakers that we have signed up to speak tonight, Mr. Chairman. And I believe at this point, you'd want the applicant to provide some answers to some of the questions that were asked.
Yes, that is correct. So, Mr. Gibbs, you
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I took down, I took some notes from each speaker. And, you know, our, our, relative to the first comments alluding to potential adverse impact on property values, you know, the, the relevant information that is available in the marketplace tends to indicate that mixed-use developments like this, which include a multifamily component in townhomes, really don't have a, a diminishing impact on property values outside of the project. And I know there is a concern voiced relative to Mill Branch Estates down the road. But, but our, our data in the multifamily developers that we're talking to indicate their experiences that there, there is no diminishing in the value of, of single-family homes that may be located in proximity to the mixed-use development. There's a synergy that's created by mixing these, these uses together in one location. And I might add that residential townhomes, be simple residential townhomes are probably throughout the Washington metropolitan area, the fastest growing and most in-demand residential housing type that we find today. And the sale prices are, are quite high. The quality is substantial. These townhomes are proposed to be a mix of 20-foot wide units on the interior. And on the ends, there will be some sticks that will be 22-foot units on the ends. Others will have 24-foot wide units on the ends, which of course will result in quite a large residential townhome. So we don't see that as being the case. We have talked to high-quality residential townhome developers and builders known throughout the Washington metropolitan area marketplace and beyond. And they find that the demand for the residential townhomes at this location is going to be astounding. And that, that they are excited to be part of the project if they're the successful bidder. Relative to, relative to traffic, let me say, and I do apologize that I admitted this in my initial presentation, we have requested a write-in, write-out onto US 301, north of the intersection of Mill Branch Road with US 301. And we can't, we can't get a full turning movement from any other location along 301 under the Mill Branch Road because there's no opportunity for the approval of a median break. But there would, there will be a write-in, write-out. When the last preliminary subdivision plan for this property was approved, that was a proposal that was approved by the state highway administration, was approved by the planning board. Because of the classification of US 301, you have to get the state highway permission for that. But again, because it was, it was approved last time, well, we think very clearly it's going to be approved again. Relative to, relative to parks, first of all, in terms of demand on other public park, public parks that might exist in the area, the, the residential components of this project will have private recreational facilities there. I realized the comment from the speaker, Mr. Henderson, I believe, was, what are we doing for public parks? And of course, there is the Green Branch Regional Park, which immediately abuts our property to the, to the, to the east. And when the last preliminary subdivision plan was approved, there was a 22-foot wide access into that park from US 301 across our property. That was removed and replaced with a 50-foot wide access, which is going to coincide with our private driveway coming into our project from Mill Branch Road. So we will be working with the Park and Planning Commission to actually assist in making an access occur into Mill Branch Park. We, I don't think the park has access, but for the easement that we're, we're providing. And of course, we're going to be constructing part of that road all the way down to our second entrance on the private roadway. So we will be facilitating the, the ultimate access to and development of Green Branch Regional Park. And again, relative, the, the final And again, relative, the final speaker, Ms. Parkin, we we would not believe that a pedestrian bridge is something that this project could finance. We're making lots of roadway improvements to US 301 and the various intersections. And so the the cost of a pedestrian bridge at this location is is really extraordinary, particularly when you consider the width that it would have to span to get across all the lanes of US 301 and then with the widening that ultimately is likely to occur on 301. So that's not something that we are proposing. I think that responds to all the questions and I don't know if either our transportation engineer or our civil engineer has anything further to add. But if you, either Jackie Chandler or Kim Morgan, have anything that I to add that I missed, please chime in.
I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Anybody? Jackie? I think that covers it. And I hope I was responsive at least to the questions. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Gibbs.
Oh, I would say, Mr. Chairman, there was a question about flooding and, you know, our our stormwater plan. We we are not allowed to accelerate the rate of flow off of our property in the post-development state from what it is in the pre-development state. And we literally, with the plan that is has been prepared and is under review, will be sending less runoff into surrounding areas than than the property we'd be doing today. So I apologize. I just wanted to respond to that question as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Howler. For and and I want to thank your your staff for, you know, being a being here to answer the questions. And I want to especially thank the citizens who signed up to speak for your input. I think it's very valuable. It's always good for our development community to hear from the citizens and how some of these actually impact them. So with that, I will declare the public hearing closed and open up for discussion with the among the board members.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, this is Joe Minor. I I forgot to mention one thing as far as the public input. You were provided with a list of questions that came in from an adjacent property owner with your package last week. There were a series of questions. And I know that those were provided to Mr. Gibbs as well. It was at least a page of specific detailed questions. A lot of them had to do with drainage and I think some of the answers were already covered tonight, but perhaps you would want to give Mr. Gibbs an opportunity to respond to those questions that were submitted by the resident.
Very good, Joe. Absolutely correct. Mr. Gibbs, do you have those questions? And I also noticed on the when I opened up the Q and A that there are some questions there also that may not have been asked.
Right, I'll leave that to the board.
Mr. Gibbs, Mr. Gibbs, you're muted.
Sorry. Thank you, sir. Yes, there were 11 items that were sent out to us by Mr. Stevens. And they almost exclusively relate to stormwater and drainage issues. And so I would like to defer that to Kim Morgan, our civil engineer. She's the expert in that area and she's familiar with the questions. She has them and sort of like her to in summary fashion, address them because some of them have been addressed already.
Hi, this I'm Kim Morgan with the Land Tech Corporation, and I am familiar with these questions. In fact, we, through our first preliminary plan, we had these similar questions. So let me just say that one of the requirements of the Prince George's County Department of Permitting, Inspection and Enforcement during the initial stormwater concept plan that was processed for the retail center requires that we detain the 100 year storm on site. And that is for two reasons. One is mainly because of the condition of the Green Branch Tributary. And so we have provided a stormwater management bond, proposed it that will detain the 100 year storm. We have also diverted currently about 60% of the site drains to a 48 inch culvert under Route 301. And it travels under Route 301 to the southbound lanes, then travels north along the southbound lanes and then enters a 72 inch culvert and comes back across 301 into Green Branch Tributary. So one of the design features that we are doing on this project is that we are diverting that bulk of that water to through an underground closed storm drain system to the stormwater management bond so that that water will that water will no longer be traveling in the portion of Green Branch Tributary that abuts our northern property line. In addition to that, there is the Terry Farm, which is adjacent to our property to the east. We will be diverting the bulk of the drainage that currently goes to the Terry Farm through an underground system. We are also reducing the flow in that area so that the water that drains east on Mill Branch Road to the existing culvert that's located, I believe, along the frontage of the Terry property, that water will, the flow will be reduced below the predeveloped flow. So that will, that that should take care of the drainage issues. We do have a wetland facility along the frontage of the property. We have worked with Wetland Solutions and MDE and the Army Corps of Engineers over the last 10 years to come up with a viable solution to for that area. That area was mainly caused by the reduced size of the culvert under Route 301. And so what we will be doing is providing 2.6 acres of wetland mitigation at another location so that we will be removing that wetland area. We there was a question about a sinkhole on Mill Branch Road. Again, I believe that is in front of the Terry property and that my recommendation would be that to get in touch with the portion of Prince George's County Department of Public Works Maintenance Department and see if that something can be done for for that sinkhole. A port, a good portion of Mill Branch Road is state highway right away. And then the rest of it is Prince George's County right away. I think that pretty much answers most of the questions that were on here. The artifacts, there is a question about the historic artifacts. And we are required, as you know, those have been removed from the site. The archaeologist, Dr. Gibbs, is categorizing those artifacts now. And once he has a summary of everything that there is, the previous preliminary plan condition was that we provide a spot on the project which would display those items and give a little history as to what what they're all about and who lived on this property in the, you know, the 1700s. I believe that's it unless anybody else has another question for me.
No other. I don't believe so. Joe, what about the questions in the Q and A? Do we need to address those?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll leave it to the board. You all can take notice of the questions, but the public hearing has been held and it was concluded. The stakeholders meeting that we had on this case was an opportunity for a free flowing exchange of question and answers. And what we typically do in those meetings is we go through every question until there aren't any questions left. The the Q and A function for these public hearings is really just set up as an opportunity to register to speak. And we've had the four speakers who spoke tonight. And as I said, I'd leave it to the board. If you if you want to look at the questions, if board members want to pursue those on your own during the meeting, that's that's up to you. But the public hearing is has been held.
Thank you. And as I look at the questions, I in my opinion, we have touched on most of those questions. So good. So now I will turn to the board and you have any input if you would like to address those questions. You all have an opportunity to look at those or we can go into deliberations. So I take it by your silence. We're going into deliberations.
Well, no, actually, Chairman Rogers, I wanted to comment only because this is my neighborhood as well. I live in Covington Manor and some of the people that have spoken are essentially my 301 neighbors. They live across the road. And I think there is a lot of anxiety amongst the individuals living in this neighborhood who have invested in this neighborhood and would like to maintain the continuity of the neighborhood. And I think that's just a theme that's been going on in Bowie probably for the past couple of years. There's been just an increased amount of residential development. That is just to the point where it's making some of us even reconsider, you know, living in Bowie and why we are here. When we purchase these properties, we, you know, purchase them for the aesthetic of having the green space, being able to see trees and rabbits and in all kinds of wildlife. We wanted to be able to send our kids to schools that were not overcrowded. We wanted to be able to drive down a residential road without sitting in traffic like we do when we're commuting into Washington DC. And more and more, this city, this suburb is turning into an urban environment. And that is extremely concerning. It's concerning for all of our neighbors. You know, when I counted it up with the townhouses down 301, the possibility of the townhouses being built at the Bowie Town Center. And then now this development, we are talking about one, a close to 1,000 properties that will be built in, I don't know, what, maybe a two mile radius. And that's not to mention the development that's already going on at Melford. So these are, the the citizens of Bowie are very, very concerned. I know that doesn't have anything to do with you know, the application and the applicant has met the criteria. But it's just something that I think needs to be said. And I am going to ring this bell every single time we have another of these applications. It's time for us to reconsider all of this development that's going on in our neighborhood. We we can't just continue to let this happen. Otherwise, we might as well be living in New York City as far as I'm concerned. I, you know, it's just really really, really becoming very, very concerning.
Thank you, Ms. Avery. Duly noted. Other comments from the board? Ms. Trask?
Mr. Chairman, this property, I remember when the Walmart was proposed for this property. And we were not looking forward to that development at that site. I'm sorry. Thank you. So we were not looking forward to that development at that site. Thinking of the traffic jams, the, you know, everything that would come, the density, the congestion and this proposal. I don't know. Is a, it's not putting me at ease. I won't say that I would prefer the Walmart were there. I won't say that. But this congestion that is inevitable does give one pause. Thank you.
Mr. Scoach, Shuttler, or Bird, do you have any comments?
No, thank you. I'm good.
Okay. All right, well, you know, I will add my 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 comment. And it's kind of a difficult situation. The developer obviously has met the burden as required, you know, by by right development for a property. However, the concerns of the citizens of Bowie are very, very paramount in terms of a community that is a livable community. And so we have to hear that and we have to, you know, I guess, look for ways in which we can coexist. The one thing that you know, I look at is I remember the development at the Boulevard at Capitol Heights when that came along was such a disjointed community. You know, it was disjointed from Woodmore Crossing, disjointed from the housing development there, from the business development there. It was disjointed even from the metro station that was in very close proximity. And I see the same thing happening as, you know, the communities around this 301 corridor in Bowie are popping up is that there's isolation, if you will. So the only safe way to go from Mill Branch Crossing across 301 to the Walmart or to Bowie Town Center, which is less than a half a mile away, is you have to drive. There's no provisions for, you know, being able to walk your community. And to me, I think that's a missed opportunity, not only on the part of the developer, but on the part of the city. As we do our urban development and urban planning, we have to, I think, be more cognizant of a walkable community and not having to get into your car to drive safely a quarter of a mile. So those are my concerns. But once again, the litmus test has been passed in terms of the standards that are required for the development of a project. So somewhere in the middle, you know, we we've got to, you know, kind of figure the whole thing out. But as it stands for this development, the task before us is to request a motion for approval or denial of staff's report. And so having said that, the floor is open for a motion.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chairman. We're just approving the staff's report or?
Well, the staff has recommended approval of preliminary plan of subdivision four dash one nine zero five zero.
Thank you, sir.
Floor is open for a motion. The floor is open for a motion. The floor is open for a motion.
Is is that our only choice, uh Mr. Chairman? Uh it seems like there is some hesitancy and unreadiness about this project.
Well, that's right. You know, we want to go into deliberations. The floor is open for deliberations so that we could kind of kick around what your hesitations are, what your thoughts are, and then, you know, we turn back to what is before us uh in preliminary plan of subdivision four dash one nine zero five zero, in which staff has recommended approval, and uh
Thank you, sir.
Task before us is, do we approve of staff's uh recommendation for approval, or we do not agree with staff's recommendation of approval?
Thank you, sir.
So do we want to go back into deliberations? Do we have uh concerns of Mr. Galato, uh Mr. Scoach, Mr. Shuttler, and Mr. Bird? Haven't heard from you guys. I guess we won't hear from you guys.
Um I move that the Bowie Advisory Planning Board members do not approve staff report on the application of the preliminary plan of subdivision before us. Thank you.
Uh can we, can you elaborate on your uh reasoning for disapproval?
The uh
There was the condition
Preliminary plan for subdivision should not be approved because there are questions remaining about uh traffic and safety. There are questions remaining about stormwater management, and there are questions remaining uh about the uh impact other potential development will have um on this project.
Okay, so we have a motion uh by Ms. Staff, um and by Ms. Trash. Do we have a second?
I second.
And we have a motion of denial of staff uh recommendation on preliminary plan of subdivision four dash one nine zero five zero, and uh we have a second by Ms. Trash. So are we ready for the vote?
I made the motion. Ms. Avery made the second.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Ms. Trash made the motion, and Ms. Avery is the second. You're correct. Very correct. So we're ready for the vote? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, respectfully ask you abstain from this vote.
Okay. Mr. Bird?
Aye.
Okay. And the chair votes nay.
You've got mine, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's one, two, three, three nays. Mr. Galato, yours was what?
I wrote it in favor of declining.
Okay, so it's one, two, three for declining, and one, two
Three, three, one.
For nay. And so the motion um for denial, I guess, what what do you do, Joe? Does he carry?
The motion fails.
Fails, right. The motion
You would ask for another motion?
Correct. All right, so there you have it. Do we need, we need another motion?
I'll move to accept. Uh the plan is written with with the amendments noted. Uh
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, now that it's reworded, I will say second that, please.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval by Mr. Shuttler and a second by Mr. Scoach. Any questions? Discussion? Ready for the vote?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh you should ask him
Unreadyness?
Ask me.
Are there any unreadiness? Yes.
The same question you asked me, the reason, the rationale for his motion.
Okay. Mr. Shuttler, would you want to give us rationale for uh recommend recommendation for approval?
Yes, just please bear with me one second.
Please pardon me, Ms. Trash. You are correct.
Okay, uh I move that uh we follow the recommendation by the city staff to approve. Um since the development proposal meets the adequate public facilities test and applies with the criteria for approval of a preliminary subdivision plan, um it's recommended for subdivision four-one or excuse me, four dash one nine oh five oh to be approved uh under uh the noted conditions, um including the the bicycle and pedestrian improvements, the traffic impact improvements. Everything noted there. Thank you.
Okay. So with that being said, do we have a second?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, for the same thing, um I'm not debating about residents or traffic, this or that. The bottom line is uh they are following the criteria, allowing them to put this into motion. That's simply by the law, they have the right, and that is why I'm second in this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Scoach. Okay, any other unreadiness? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Who?
Opposed.
And so we have the motion carries. Uh let the record reflect, it was four four votes yes, three votes no. Motion carries, and we thank you um Mr. Gibbs and team for your uh participation, and staff, we thank you for your work.